I have North Glenn, the Early Childhood Partnership of Adams Organizations across the nation are recognizing the contributions of childcare providers on May 9th. Whereas the early childhood care and education system supports children's holistic development, social, emotional, physical, and cognitive, and contributes to educational success and lifelong well-being, while also generating a positive economic impact for families and communities. And whereas early childhood education and childcare providers are essential to the health and sustainability of our communities by offering safe, inclusive, and enriching environments where children can thrive and families can participate in the workforce with confidence. And whereas the city of North Glenn recognizes that providers are indispensable to family stability and community resilience, and that these professionals are often under-resourced and under-recognized despite the high level of skill, education, and care they provide. And whereas support for accessible, affordable, high-quality early childhood education and care services reflects a commitment to equity, child and family well-being, and long-term economic prosperity. Now therefore I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of North Glenn Colorado, do hereby proclaim May 9th, 2025 as Provider Appreciation Day in the City of North Glenn, and urge all residents to recognize childcare providers for their important work, the early care and education they provide to children, and how valuable they are to our communities. Dated at North Glenn, Colorado, this 28th day of April, 2025. Woo, you deserve a huge round of applause. I mean, I was having a hard time not going "Amen" to every single thing on here. Like, this is really, you deserve so much recognition. So, we have two proclamations. The North Glenn Rec Center preschool staff, who wants to take this one? And then also the Early Childhood Partnership of Adams County. And you can also take the mic and add more details.
All right, Mayor and Council members, on behalf of the Early Childhood Partnership of Adams County, I want to thank you for recognizing May 9th as Early Care and Education Provider Appreciation Day. Early care and education providers work in a variety of settings, including licensed family childcare homes and centers. During COVID, these professionals were recognized as essential workers to help ensure families could work and our communities could continue to access the services they need. We know that while COVID is behind us, this workforce remains essential for all of us to go about our daily lives, from going to the grocery store to getting back gas. The businesses in our community rely on working parents, and therefore all of us rely on childcare being available and affordable. Further, we know that children who attend early care and education programs are engaged in activities and relationships with others that are building the foundation for their future success and their ability to be contributing members to our society. Most young children have all parents in the workforce, and yet in Adams County, we only have the capacity to provide licensed childcare for 9% of our infants, 19% of our toddlers, and 73% of our preschoolers. Waitlist for infant care can be anywhere from six to 18 months long. This lack of capacity leaves our families scrambling and sometimes making hard decisions about returning to work. What may be contributing to this lack of capacity is over the last four years, other industries such as fast food and retail have increased wages by five to nine percent, while early care and education provider wages have only increased three percent. And provider wages are in the bottom five percent of all occupations for wages. Additionally, many of our providers do not have access to benefits. However, these providers come to work with love and passion for the work they do. Despite the challenges I've noted here, they recognize the importance of their job on the development of children and the economic stability of families and our community. They provide safe, nurturing, and educationally rich environments for our youngest citizens. And because of that, we want to recognize and appreciate them not only on May 9th, but every day they show up to work.
Yes, we all, we all agree. We're gonna take a picture real fast. Thank you for being here.
We are, we're gonna be a little creative, so those of you that have the ordinance, I can have you in the middle. And open your, open your little folders, and then everybody that's on the side, I'll need you to lighten. Turn to your side and look over your shoulders so I can fit everybody. All right. Can I have you, yeah, there you go. All right, I don't want the podium, that's just the hard part. Okay, everybody say "cheese." Actually, let's say "childcare, yay." Okay, thank you.
Thanks again. Okay. The second one is our National Day of Prayer. So we have representatives from the city's faith organizations that have been invited. So if you are with one of these organizations, please come up. Metropolitan Denver North Islamic Center, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Good Shepherd Presbyterian Church, Immaculate Heart of Mary Catholic Church, Church of the Beloved, and Crossroads Community Center. Okay. Whereas, on April 17th, 1952, President Harry S. Truman signed a bill calling for a National Day of Prayer in the United States. And in 1988, President Ronald Reagan designated the first Thursday in May as the day for its annual observance. And whereas National Day of Prayer encourages people from all faiths and backgrounds to come together in unity and solidarity, to celebrate diversity, honor different cultures, and show respect for one another's beliefs as we collectively seek divine guidance, wisdom, and protection. And whereas, as Americans, we celebrate our constitutional right to freely exercise our convictions, no matter our faith or beliefs, to practice individual prayer, reflection, and meditation, to find sanctuary, and to reflect on the things that unite us in humanity and service. And whereas, we wish to recognize the profound role that prayer has played in the history of the United States, providing guidance, strength, and unity in times of challenge and celebration, inspiring hope, fostering understanding, and promoting peace within our diverse communities. Now therefore I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of North Glenn Colorado, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 1st, 2025 as a National Day of Prayer in the City of North Glenn, and encourage all residents to join with open hearts and minds in prayer, meditation, or reflection to bring about joy, peace, hope, compassion, and protection for us all. Dated at North Glenn, Colorado, this 28th day of April, 2025. So... And I will open the floor to anyone who would like to add on to that, for sure. We can just pass the mic down, you have the floor. But I also have copies for your organization as well. So you can say something or pass it on, it's up to you.
I said my prayer.
My name is Isma from the North Glenn Islamic Mosque, and I want to thank Madam Mayor and Councilman and Woman for making North Glenn a place for people from all faiths to get together. And I hope that it stays that way. And I want to thank everyone for being here.
Thank you, I agree with all of that. All of what you've just said. I'm Sheri Frye, I am the pastor at Good Shepherd Presbyterian Church, and thank you very much for the proclamation, Mayor. On behalf of Good Shepherd Presbyterian Church, which I have two of my fellow members here, we thank you for recognizing National Prayer Day. We think it's important because it affirms our commitment to community and faith and unity. It offers opportunities to come together, not just as a congregation, but alongside neighbors of all beliefs, to seek guidance and hope and strength for our city and our nation and the world. And in times of challenge, this National Day of Prayer reminds us of the power of collective reflection and the importance of lifting each other up through prayer. Thank you.
My name is Dustin Trail, and from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. The opportunity to celebrate religion and the opportunity for freedom of religion.
Twenty-eighth day of April, 2025. Woo! You deserve a huge round of applause. I mean, I was having a hard time not going amen to every single thing on here. Like, this is really, you deserve so much recognition. So, we have two proclamations. The North Glenn Rec Center preschool staff. Who wants to take this one? And then also the Early Childhood Partnership of Adams County. And you can also take the mic and add more details.
No, please. This is your time.
All right. Mayor and council members, on behalf of the Early Childhood Partnership of Adams County, I want to thank you for recognizing May 9th as Early Care and Education Provider Appreciation Day. Early care and education providers work in a variety of settings, including licensed family childcare homes and centers. During COVID, these professionals were recognized as essential workers to help ensure families could work and our communities could continue to access the services they need. We know that while COVID is behind us, this workforce remains essential for all of us to go about our daily lives, from going to the grocery store to getting back gas. The businesses in our community rely on working parents, and therefore, all of us rely on childcare being available and affordable. Further, we know that children who attend early care and education programs are engaged in activities and relationships with others that are building the foundation for their future success and their ability to be contributing members to our society. Most young children have all parents in the workforce, and yet, in Adams County, we only have the capacity to provide licensed childcare for 9% of our infants, 19% of our toddlers, and 73% of our preschoolers. Waitlist for infant care can be anywhere from six to 18 months long. This lack of capacity leaves our families scrambling and sometimes making hard decisions about returning to work. What may be contributing to this lack of capacity is, over the last four years, other industries such as fast food and retail have increased wages by 5% to 9%, while early care and education provider wages have only increased 3%. And provider wages are in the bottom 5% of all occupations for wages. Additionally, many of our providers do not have access to benefits. However, these providers come to work with love and passion for the work they do. Despite the challenges I've noted here, they recognize the importance of their job on the development of children and the economic stability of families and our community. They provide safe, nurturing, and educationally rich environments for our youngest citizens. And because of that, we want to recognize and appreciate them not only on May 9th, but every day they show up to work.
Yes, we all, we all agree. We're gonna take a picture real fast. Thank you for being here.
We are, we're gonna be a little creative, so those of you that have the ordinance, if I can have you in the middle. And open your, open your little folders. And then everybody that's on the side, I'll need you to lighten. Turn to your side and look over your shoulders, so I can fit everybody.
All right.
Can I have you? Yeah, there you go. All right, I don't want the podium, that's just the hard part. Okay. Everybody say cheese. Actually, let's say childcare, yay! Okay, thank you.
Thanks again. Okay. The second one is our National Day of Prayer. So, we have representatives from the city's faith organizations that have been invited. So, if you are with one of these organizations, please come up. Metropolitan Denver North Islamic Center, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Good Shepherd Presbyterian Church, Immaculate Heart of Mary Catholic Church, Church of the Beloved, and Crossroads Community Center. Okay. Whereas, on April 17th, 1952, President Harry S. Truman signed a bill calling for a National Day of Prayer in the United States. And in 1988, President Ronald Reagan designated the first Thursday in May as the day for its annual observance. And whereas, National Day of Prayer encourages people from all faiths and backgrounds to come together in unity and solidarity, to celebrate diversity, honor different cultures, and show respect for one another's beliefs as we collectively seek divine guidance, wisdom, and protection. And whereas, as Americans, we celebrate our constitutional right to freely exercise our convictions, no matter our faith or beliefs, to practice individual prayer, reflection, and meditation, to find sanctuary, and to reflect on the things that unite us in humanity and service. And whereas, we wish to recognize the profound role that prayer has played in the history of the United States, providing guidance, strength, and unity in times of challenge and celebration, inspiring hope, fostering understanding, and promoting peace within our diverse communities. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of North Glenn, Colorado, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 1st, 2025, as a National Day of Prayer in the City of North Glenn, and encourage all residents to join with open hearts and minds in prayer, meditation, or reflection to bring about joy, peace, hope, compassion, and protection for us all, dated at North Glenn, Colorado, this 28th day of April, 2025. So... And I will open the floor to anyone who would like to add on to that, for sure. We can just pass the mic down. You have the floor. But I also have copies for your organization as well. So, you can say something or pass it on, it's up to you.
I said my prayer.
My name is Isa from the North Glenn Islamic Mosque, and I wanna thank Madam Mayor and councilman and woman for making North Glenn a place for people from all faith to get together. And I hope that it stays, stays that way. And I wanna thank everyone for being here.
Thank you, I agree with all of that. All of it, what you've just said. I'm Sherri Frye, I'm the pastor at Good Shepherd Presbyterian Church, and thank you very much for the proclamation, Mayor. On behalf of Good Shepherd Presbyterian Church, which I have two of my, my fellow members here, we thank you for recognizing National Prayer Day. We think it's important because it affirms our commitment to community and faith and unity. It offers opportunities to come together, not just as a congregation, but alongside neighbors of all beliefs, to seek guidance and hope and strength for our city and our nation and the world. And in times of challenge, this National Day of Prayer reminds us of the power of collective reflection and the importance of lifting each other up through prayer. Thank you.
My name is Dustin Trail, and from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and just wanna thank you for the opportunity to be here today, the opportunity to, to celebrate religion and the opportunity for freedom of religion. What a great blessing it is in this country to have that. So, thank you for letting us be here today.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We really appreciate you spending your evening with us. So, I'm gonna pass these out and we'll take another photo.
Yeah, let's try to have our, our guests from the faith community in like the front row and then kinda stagger. Yeah, like she's perfect. Jody's got it perfect, yeah, you got it. No, I think you're okay. As long as I get it. Like, when they're all the way to the bar, it gets tough, but right there, it should be okay. No, you're good. All right. Who can I not see? Shannon, you need to step up just a little bit. Get cozy, there you go. And Catherine, I think you're good. All right, from where I'm standing, I can see everybody's face. Mayor, can you step in half a step? There you go. All right, everybody smile. Everybody say faith. Nice. All right, thank you.
Okay. Up next, National Public Service Recognition Week. So, we have some City of North Glenn staff to come up and accept this proclamation. These employees were 2024 Hidden Gem Award recipients. So, we welcome Angelo Jardina. Come on up, Neighborhood Services Officer, and the co-star of the May's Mayor's Monthly Minute. Terry McKenzie, Special Events Assistant. Justin Perdue, Recreation Manager. Becky Smith, Planning Manager. Kevin Venzel, Risk Manager. Come on up. Whereas, since 1985, the first week of May has been recognized nationwide as Public Service Recognition Week, a time to thank public employees at all levels of government for their hard work and commitment. And whereas, more than 24 million people, about 15% of the US workforce, serve in federal, state, and local government roles, including military service, bringing integrity, compassion, and skill to the work of serving our communities. And whereas, nearly one-third of these dedicated public workers are expected to retire by the end of 2025, creating important opportunities for a new generation to enter public service. And whereas, public employees serve in a wide variety of roles, such as administrators, first responders, healthcare professionals, social workers, engineers, accountants, educators, city planners, IT technicians, maintenance workers, sanitation workers, and recreation leaders, among others. And whereas, the work of public employees touches nearly every part of our daily lives, from clean water and safe streets to emergency response, education, and public health, they are the bridge between government and the community, delivering essential services with care and professionalism. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of North Glenn, Colorado, do hereby proclaim May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as National Public Service Recognition Week in the City of North Glenn. The theme for 2025 is "Let's Celebrate the Unsung Heroes." I invite all residents to join me in thanking the public employees who work behind the scenes and on the front lines to keep North Glenn running strong, dated at North Glenn, Colorado, this 28th day of April, 2025. So, let's hear it for our guests, first of all. Because as we heard, they were award recipients, and so they are, they stand out in the city. But we also have other members, other public service employees that are in the house. Can you stand up? Come on. There's some of you over here as well. Yes. Oh, we gotta, we gotta do better with these claps, people. Okay. Because everything that was said in this proclamation is true, unsung heroes is right. It's all the behind-the-scenes stuff that keeps our city running. And so, we, I know I speak for council, we're very grateful to all of you. Now that I've done my extra piece, is there anyone here that would like to add on?
I think I was nominated, so... But while we certainly appreciate the expression of gratitude from Mayor and Council, we feel as though it's a calling, and our buckets are filled every single day. So, we are happy to serve in the roles in which we, I would say, were chosen. So, thank you once again for, for the gratitude and recognition. Love being here. So, go North Glenn.
So, everybody angle and get friendly. Go, great. All right. Smile. North Glenn proud. The last two groups way up, did you? Just so you know. All right. Last one. Thank you.
All right. National Small Business Week is coming up as well, and we have some guests. The Body Refinery Pilates Studio. So, we have owners April Grillo and Mike Grillo doing a "Come on Down." And bring the little Grillos. Come on. Everyone can come. Bring everybody, come on. Hi, how are you? Well, thank you for being here. Whereas, the passion and perseverance of America's 33 million small businesses serve as the engine of our nation's economy, fueling innovation, supporting families, and creating opportunities that strengthen communities. And whereas, small businesses are the heartbeat of our neighborhoods, employing more than half of the nation's workforce, driving supply chains, shaping industries, and paving the way for the groundbreaking ideas and technologies of the future. And whereas, when we champion small businesses, we empower the visionaries and risk takers who generate prosperity, preserve the distinct character of our communities, and create lasting opportunities for future generations. And whereas, since its inception in 1963, National Small Business Week has honored the achievements of entrepreneurs and highlighted the invaluable resources provided by the Small Business Administration, growing into a nationwide celebration of ingenuity and determination. And whereas, the City of North Glenn proudly joins the national movement to recognize and uplift the small businesses that make our community thrive, ensuring their continued success for generations to come. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of North Glenn, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as National Small Business Week in the City of North Glenn, and encourage the community to celebrate and support the small businesses that shape our economy, inspire innovation, and bring vitality to our communities today and every day, dated at North Glenn, Colorado, this 28th day of April, 2025.
I just wanna say thank you. It was very, very nice to be invited. We haven't been open very long. I'm so excited that you wanna, it's my turn. We've been open very long, but I have had a chance to get to know a few other small business owners in the City of North Glenn, and they're lovely. So, we feel very honored in the mix of all of those people to be honored here today and throughout this process by the city. Everyone's just kind of been very, very helpful throughout the process of starting a business here in North Glenn, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Oliver.
Oliver. I need you.
Come on in.
All right, we're gonna put you guys in the middle, please. All right. Okay. Everybody ready? Smile. I'd say Pilates, come on. One more, smile, don't blink. Okay, thank you. Say bye, Mayor.
Okay, now that we are all settled back in, thank you so much. Up next is our Youth Commission Report. Youth Commission President Mira Bippin is here to provide an update to council. Good evening.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. My name is Mira Bippin, and I am currently the President of the North Glenn Youth Commission. And I'm here today to represent our Quarter One Report for January through March. So, one of our big aims was to increase board membership and recruiting. And in order to do this, we've set up booths at various fairs around the community. So, Stargate had kind of like a fair, so we set up a booth there, and we were able to share a little bit more about what the North Glenn Youth Commission does, and kind of help increase recruitment in that way. And then, another thing that we were aiming to do is send information to local middle schools and high schools in the district, as that is one of our biggest recruiting efforts, so we hope to do that in the next few weeks as well. At the end of last year, we also worked to set our priority projects as having our safe haven-type community area and focusing on environmental advocacy. For our environmental advocacy project, we've been posting on our social media about nature-oriented days to spread awareness. And additionally, we look forward to kind of getting involved in more events in the community. During this time, we also met with the DICE Board to talk about future projects and how we can collaborate with them in the future, so we're really looking forward to those opportunities. Additionally, Nosli Suyash and I had the opportunity to attend the Under the Dome event, where we got, where we got to meet with Representative Jenny Wilford and talk to her about her current work. This was such a great opportunity to see how legislation was passed in Colorado, as we got to sit in on a House of Representatives session, overall, just kind of hear about everything that was going on, and it was a great, insightful opportunity. So, the first few months was really just focused on setting up the groundwork for our future projects, and we look forward to getting those started during the summer and in the fall. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Youth Commission is amazing. Y'all are doing so great. Recruitment has been, I know, really important, as a lot of you are graduating. But I just wanna say thank you all so much for everything that you do, you're doing amazing. That's it.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No questions, but I just wanna say great job, and congratulations on graduating and all that good stuff coming up ahead.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, same kind of a thing, I just wanna say thank you so much, and I know, just I'll speak on behalf of the DICE Board, the Diversity, Inclusivity, and Social Equity Board, that we appreciate the, all the cooperative efforts and help that the Youth Commission has given that board. So, once again, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I wanna basically echo everything. Thank you, well done tonight, I appreciate all your work.
All right, thank you so much for having me, appreciate it.
Okay, moving into council communications, councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanna say thank you to everyone who came out for proclamations. We had a full house, it was so fun, it felt just so invigorating. Thank you to the Youth Commission, who came and stayed. Bye, Mayor. Thank you to everyone who spoke during public invited-to-be-heard. Not too too much going on in the last two weeks for me. I went to the Civic Influencer Event that was hosted here by Rocky Mountain Partnership, which was very cool. And I also am so excited, I brought my children to Bring Your Children to Work Day last week, which was very fun. We lasted 45 minutes, so it was a big, big moment for us. Connor said that he would like to give Ms. Heather a big hug, plus I would pass that along, and he would also like more doughnuts. So... Yes, he does. So, it was a great event, it was so nice to see so many kids, it was really awesome. Mine were a little on the younger side, but that's okay, it was awesome. And that is all for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, just wanna thank Tom Lampeau and Mr. Long for coming to speak tonight. No other updates.
Okay. Councilmember Nowiki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to everyone who spoke, thank you for, to everyone who is here. Just a couple things from me. The Finance Committee met, we reviewed the council travel policy following council's remarks, then also preliminary discussion around sewage and sanitation rates, which staff will bring before council in the weeks ahead. Also, the North Glenn Senior Organization met, and just wanted to let you know, they have lots of activities, they love the new bus, so they have a ton of activities going and different shows available. And there's also, if you know any other seniors in need, they also provide support to seniors in North Glenn as well. So, please reach out. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Hiramio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Thursday, the 24th, I attended the NADA meeting, it's the North Area Transportation Alliance, and some good news for people who ride the End Line. On Friday nights, they're gonna extend the last train leaving Eastlake at 10:43, and then coming back to, from Union Station at 11:26, so... Yeah, so if you're attending any sports games, or Rockies, of course, yeah, or Avs or Nuggets, hopefully we stay in the playoffs, have a deep run. So, hopefully... Also, I attended, on Friday, the 25th, Light of Hope. It was 25 Years of Brighter Futures with CASA, that's the Current Appointed Special Advocates. So, I attended that event too, along with our Mayor Protem. Let's see, what else? I just wanted to thank all the people that were here for the proclamations, the faith leaders, the early childhood educators, the North Glenn business owners, and our staff, of course. Thank you all, and for all that you do, and I'd like to say that, yeah, I also was, I took preschool here at North Glenn at the old rec center back in, in the 90s, so, yeah, I'd like to say that I was, you know, in the, in that program, back when it was called Teeny Tots and Tiny Tots, so that's what it was called back in the day. So, I think that, you know, early child education is huge for, you know, preparing children for kindergarten and for their lives, so I wanna show them a lot of support, and that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I did do a couple of testimony events for Colorado Communities for Climate Action and North Glenn, and I testified against Senate Bill 280, which is, was a big package to encourage data center development in the state of Colorado. And might think that, that was something that is unusual to testify against, but the incentives they were offering to companies to come in and build their big data centers here were not very helpful or beneficial to the state of Colorado, plus the drain on energy and our electrical infrastructure, and updating that kind of thing would have fallen on the state, so that was a testify, a negative testimony. And then, the Air Quality Control Commission was working out some more air toxics rulemaking, and I testified to ask them to include some different toxic, toxins that we do find in the air, and did find out that they listened to, not only my testimony, but a lot of people about that, and so they did change that. The other thing was on CC4CA, again, we met, the board meeting was on April 18th, and we are continuing to plan for our annual meeting. April 22nd, the Diversity Board met. We are moving forward with our Juneteenth and Pride events and the planning that goes along with that. Also, we had several speakers, and one was Director Peterson, who's here tonight, and she was able to give us an update on funding for the Odell Berry Park, and things are looking positive in that direction, and we may actually be fully funded before, you know, before we know it. I guess I'll just say that. We also voted to fund a fall workshop from, oh, I'm gonna forget how... We also voted to fund a fall workshop from, oh, I'm going to forget what you call them again, LCAC, Latin Arts Council. So they, we did dedicate some funds to that. I also want to thank all the speakers who came tonight and all the faith leaders and echo what has, other comments have been made about how important the freedom of religion is. And also want to, because we are a diverse community, and I would like to honor and represent people who have no religion at all. So we just want to be welcoming to everyone and the fact that we can live together and allow each of us to have our own belief system, I think is an amazing thing. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Condo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So last week, the Mayor, Mayor Protem and I, we attended the Adams County Mayors and Commissions Youth Awards. And if you're not aware of what this event is all about, it's recognition of young people in high school and below who have faced some really insurmountable challenges, whether it's health, home conditions, some people fearing tyranny, traveling many distances, many long distances to come here. And I was really moved and proud of the fact that Northland had seven awardees. I think it was a very respectable turnout. Thornton had a similar number. And if I recall, I think we fatayed about 30 people or 35 people out of that. So seven out of 35 is a great showing. And I do want to recognize Jenny Murphy, who used to be on staff as our Community Relations. But as I spoke with people afterwards, I learned that really Jenny was the one that laid the foundation to create the level of trust and confidence for nominators to work with families, to bring their stories forward, because some of these stories obviously are very personal. And Jenny was really on the ground floor of that, and I wanted to just give props to her. Second of all, North Metro Fire. We have elections coming up here on May 6th, and the deadline to apply for a mail-in ballot is tomorrow. You could probably find that when you Google "North Metro Fire Elections." And if you don't make that deadline for the mail-in ballot, balloting will take place in person on May 6th at Station 61 in Broomfield, Station 62, which is off of Huron, and at the North Metro Fire Headquarters in downtown Broomfield. Another fire-related, although this is not North Metro, but I do want to share this because I think it's really appropriate, given the Marshall Fire sort of incident that we had. But South Adams County Fire had a demonstration building burn on Thursday. And what they did was they had this building constructed by 27J students. So just like Adams District 12 with Future Ford, it's an opportunity for students to practice the trade of carpentry, masonry, et cetera, et cetera. So the demonstration house was built with a residential sprinkler system. And last year, they did a partial burn to demonstrate how effective residential sprinklers are in terms of tamping down fires before they get out of control. This year, they burnt the building down in its entirety, and they wanted to demonstrate a point because 10 feet away was a hardened building. So new codes, kind of like this cement nomex matrix of siding, things of that nature. And it just occurred to me, this was the first time I've ever seen a structural fire. Now, it's not anybody's house. It was obviously just a project, but I just thought to myself, you know, firefighters, they're people, and they empathize. And so when you're actually going and responding to a real resident fire, I just couldn't help. It was a very gut visceral reaction for me to watch that. And I thought, boy, you know, the trauma of that can really hit hard, hit home. And so I just wanted to share that, not only firemen, but also our officers in uniform at Police Department. So I do want to just share that again, how much importance it is, mental health is, for those people that really put their lives on the line. Couldn't really underscore that enough. And then finally, I'd like to thank councilmembers Nowicki and Burns. I know that we've had lunches and breakfasts over the last couple months, and even though we're not having breakfast with our city manager any longer, I do appreciate the opportunity to have a candid conversation and at times ask for some feedback, and I very much appreciate that. For me, it's a growth and a learning opportunity, so thank you. Thank you both. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Roper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This week, we do have, I wanted to highlight the Food for Hope Birthday Bash. And if you're not familiar with Food for Hope, it is an organization that helps our own children, our own families, right here in Adams County, and a lot of those are our Northland schools and our families here. About two weeks ago, I took 35 students and family members to Food for Hope to volunteer, and they were able to pack, in about an hour and a half, they packed more than 750 weekend bags that families take, and it was just incredible to see the impact that they're making and to see the bags go into carts that are going to our Northland families. So that was really powerful. So you can help Food for Hope by going to the Birthday Bash, silent auction, live music, cocktails, networking. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was awesome. I saw that story about your students. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will start off by echoing everything that's been said. Thank you to all the people that came for the proclamations and all the people that spoke. A few things. Vail had an extra meeting on the 16th, and we do have some funding this year, so I just want to put that out there, when the applications come out. I think it's around July that we are looking for nonprofits that serve victims of crime. That is the stipulation. So if you know of any, please reach out to any of the Vail Board members. So we're continuing to try and focus on where our efforts and communication is going to go to make sure we get more applications this year. As was mentioned before, I also attended the Rocky Mountain Partnership Civic Influencer and Policemaker. They had a wonderful panel. Some of the speakers included Rep. Manny Rutino, Mayor Protem of Thornton, and of course, our very own city manager was on the panel, so that was really wonderful. And I had the opportunity to do the welcome, which was also a really good experience. They were partnering with the Wallace Foundation, which provides funding for teens and adolescents, and youth programs. So that partnership is very crucial and could provide some funding in the future. On the 21st, as part of my work on the Family Justice Center, co-chair of the Community Engagement Committee, we visited a potential temporary location for the FJC. I won't say where it is, because that still is in discussion right now and still has to go through a lot of channels, but there is some movement, so I thought that council would be interested in knowing that at least that is moving along slowly, but there's good reasons for it. You know, it has to be put in a very well-intentioned way. I attended the CBCA Luncheon, which is, I'm probably going to get this wrong, Colorado Business Committee for the Arts Awards. And I will let the mayor report out on that, because it was a really wonderful experience, but she's on the board, and I know she has some really great things to say about it. But it was a really amazing experience to see how business and the arts can kind of co-live and support each other. I attended the Adams County Mayor's Youth Awards. As Councilmember Condo reported out, we had seven amazing finalists. I think that was over a third of the applicants. And the speaker absolutely broke my heart. Those were really, really tough, really a tough speaker to hear. You can look up the girl in the commode, something that happened four years ago, and it's just heart wrenching, but she's a survivor and really inspired, I think, the kids that were there, as well as everybody else. Went to the Bring Your Child to Work Day. Great job by the city. Those kids were having so much fun, and the mayor did such a great job of engaging the kids. You can tell she's a teacher, because all the kids were very excited to talk about their favorite foods and all those wonderful things. And then last but not least, I also went to the CASA Light of Hope Luncheon, and the speaker was the same as the Youth and Mayor Awards. So had my heart broken twice, but you know, it's all for a good cause, and I'm just really, I guess, honored to be a part of, you know, this, I guess, organization, city, and council that supports these good causes. And that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I do have a few quick things. So I did have a Mile High Flood District meeting. Thank you specifically to Shelby Smith for organizing the Bring Your Child to Work Day. That was very elaborate. It was very well done. It was super organized, and she just brings a ton of energy to the city, but also, like, she was just a natural with kids. It was very fun. I also had the opportunity, which I just love, is the fishing derby. I get to pass out the trophies, and it was such a beautiful day on Saturday. The lake was completely surrounded, and the fish were just flying in, and we had some really sweet kids that earned their little trophy in their tackle box for getting the largest fish in their category. But thank you to staff, and also, I just wanted to note that CCPP had a booth there, and I really appreciated. They have a brand-new logo that is really beautiful, talking about bridging between community and policing, and I just, it was very nice, and I got to spend some time with some board members, and they had a survey available for residents, so hopefully they got some input there. The ACM-CYA, that's the longest acronym ever. Those awards were awesome, as we're already shared. Many of you know that I kind of reignited the Mayor's Monthly Coffee, and the most recent one, we held at one of our, I think it was Station 62, the fire station. And it was very intimate, but it was very impactful, and that's really the whole purpose of these, is to go back to a more intimate setting, to really get to know residents and have them get to know me and the city, and to learn, you know, what their lives are like. And so it was a very powerful event, but it was very small. The next one is coming up on May 17th. It'll be at the Stoneharker Farmhouse, and so please come out. But also know that there's not a formal presentation, there's not a whole lot of staff to answer a ton of questions. It's really more of just, it's, come have coffee with me. It's very fun. And then finally, I do want to talk a little bit about the CBCA Business Award. So I'm not sure that everyone is aware of the connection that Northland has to this organization. So the Northland Arts and Humanities Foundation, they are members of CBCA. I do sit on their board. Michael Stricker is in their Leadership Arts Program, which is amazing learning, but it helps us connect with SCFD. But one of my favorite things was the final performer. I just have to shout them out, because they were a Northland family. They're called Dream Creates Inspire, so they go by DCI. They, oh, so cute, so inspiring, had the whole place on their feet. So it's a husband and wife, and their young daughter. She had her own little microphone with a little stuffed animal on top of it, and they were rapping, and it was joy and inspiration and love, and it was just fantastic. And then I found out that they are going to be performing at our Juneteenth celebration and that that sweet little girl goes to our Northland preschool. And it was just so sweet, because she did such a great job. She knew exactly when to do her little part. So that was very fun to meet them. But finally, I just wanted to share the inspiration. So there is a gentleman. I want to get his name and title correct. So James Holmes, he has a vast history in the city with arts and culture. He's currently the Executive Director of Cherokee Ranch and Castle Foundation, but he is himself an artist. And he gave a very inspirational acceptance speech, because he won the John Madden Jr. Leadership Award. But he said this. He said, "If we all agree that art is healing and art is medicine, then artists are physicians and art institutions are the clinics and hospitals." And our Northland Arts and Humanities Foundation does that for our community. So that was, it was just really sweet and really inspirational, and it's just lovely to have, to be a part of that organization. So that is my final thing. City Clerk Small, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not have any updates tonight.
Okay. City Manager Guyer?
I do have one update for council, and I feel weird sharing this after you just shared that beautiful story, so I'm sorry in advance. I wanted to provide an update to council about concerns about abandoned vehicles, parking violations, vehicles needing to be towed. We've been very responsive. Staff has been behind the scenes in addressing the concerns that many of you have received ongoing from constituents. So I'm going to share some data with you, if you want to take a few notes. Parking tickets year-to-date through April 15th. There have been 421 parking tickets issued, which is a 1,001% increase over the same period last year, which we had 38 tickets issued. Vehicles that have been towed this year through April 15th totals 901, which is a 225% increase from 277 last year. 389 were labeled to be abandoned in some fashion, which is about a 1,600% increase from last year's vehicles labeled abandoned at 23. So feel free to share those statistics, data points. If you get any questions from residents, our efforts will be ongoing. But again, that's in response to many of the complaints you all have heard at your ward meetings, concerns that we receive via the CRM. So, thank you.
Looks like Councilmember Condo has a question for you?
Yes.
Yes, I do. I just remember, and I believe Dr. Goff, you were on that thread, concern about providing adequate notifications so that if somebody has their vehicle towed, they know where to go to retrieve said vehicle.
Deputy Chief Darlene is here, and he can provide that exact process if council would like him to elaborate.
If you'll indulge me, yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. The process, so in the past, we have done more notice of violations, right? And a notice of violation is essentially a sticker on the window that provides 72 hours of time for a vehicle owner to come into compliance. We've kind of put into place policy due to the number of vehicles that we have that are expired by a significant period of time. Initially, that timeframe was six months. If they were expired by six months or not, or beyond, we weren't providing notice. We were just towing the vehicles. We moved that out to a year, because we have now, as you saw with the citation numbers, we now have parking citations that can address that issue relatively quickly, right? Bring those individuals into court and bring them into compliance. So we moved that out to a year. So the only vehicles we're really towing without notice is a vehicle that's over a year or vehicles that show signs of abandonment. So we're talking about vehicles with flat tires, broken windows, other issues that show that the vehicle is inoperable at the time that we locate the vehicle or that the complaint comes in. So the process still provides the residents with some level of notice. If we do get contacted by a resident when we're doing the investigation, oftentimes our animal control officers will, or our officers will, give them the notice rather than the citation or tow, because they have immediate access to the resident or to the person who, the occupant, owner of the vehicle. So there are opportunities for us to, you know, give notice when it's irrelevant or when it's necessary, but we kind of put into place the policy that if you're over a year expired, so that's a lot of time, right? The city gives, the state gives a one-month grace period. We're 12 times that before we start to the immediate tow piece, or if it's showing abandonment. And those numbers are not simply driven by the police department. I give a lot of credit to the code enforcement officers who have done a lot of that work.
Thank you. Appreciate that explanation.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So you use the phrase, "we kind of put in the policy." Is this more a procedure?
It's a procedure, yeah. It's not a written policy. I mean, it is a policy in the sense that we're training our officers, we're talking to our code enforcement, so we're on the same page. Code enforcement and the police department are doing the same procedure, but we have no requirement under the ordinance to provide that level of time, right? We could tow immediately for every vehicle expired over a month. Just procedurally, we want to give our residents an opportunity and to give them, you know, more time in those circumstances.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. City Attorney Hoffman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I do not have anything to report this evening.
Okay. I mean, you're sitting there. Deputy City Manager Loveland? What do you got for us?
Good evening. I have nothing. This is the first time I've been called on.
I know. I know.
I appreciate that opportunity. And maybe next time.
I was just working my way down the line. Didn't want you to feel left out.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We will, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Okay, we have one public hearing tonight, CB 2028. Do you want to read the title for me?
A bill for a special ordinance amending the 2025 budget, recognizing revenues and appropriating expenditures by supplemental appropriation for the payment of the costs and expenses of the municipal government agencies and offices of the City of North Glenn, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025.
Okay. For this item, comments are limited to five minutes per speaker. I will now open the public hearing on CB 2028. Is there anyone who would like to speak either for or against CB 2028? Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak? You can unmute yourself by pressing star six at this time. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Ordinances on second reading, CB 2028 supplemental appropriation and CIP carryover. Will, is there a motion to approve on second reading?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Deputy City Manager Loveland will provide a summary of this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will not reread the title, but this is our annual update to the budget to capture carryover projects, which just really means projects that were not completed have been previously budgeted in 2024. Those projects were not completed by year end. There's also some grant revenue and expenditure recognition over grants that we captured in the, in the fall of last year that don't make it quite in the 2024 process of budget that we approve at the end of October. So we're capturing, recognizing those revenues and expenditures. I won't read the charts of numbers to you, but there are a variety of things regarding police vehicle purchases, construction projects to various parks and what have you. So anyway, we're, we're doing our annual cleanup. Part of the timing of this is we go through an annual audit process. And as much as we would like at the year end, companies to invoice us and bill us for their work, you know, by the end of January, sometimes, you know, late invoices trickle in. And so it's our obligation to record those, those payments to the correct fiscal year. So we take pretty much the first quarter of the year to make sure that all of that information gets to us. So the timing of why that, this conversation is happening in April is due to those constraints by, by our, our audit work that we do. So with that, staff supports this and would request approval from council. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So earlier during public comment, we heard from an individual that said, "How come we're only getting this straight now?" So is what you just kind of went through the reason why we need to kind of make adjustments? Because that clairvoyance is just, it doesn't exist back in October or November when we worked on the budget initially?
Yes, that is correct. And so through the budget process, we do estimate, you know, where we expect expenditures to be at the end of the year. Sometimes we're right on track, sometimes we're not quite so much. So that is the reconciliation process that we're doing right now.
And then you mentioned, follow on. You mentioned that we have some grants that obviously materialize. Can you, can you just put a dollar figure on that just for my edification?
So looking at the sheet, there's opioid grants for $164,000. There were some fleet charge, charge ahead grants. That total is about $100,000, it looks like. So there's a few hundred thousand dollars here and there of various grant awards that we receive after we go through the budget process in the fall.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So to sort of reiterate that a little bit, this is a common process. We do this a lot. There is no incompetence here and there's also no, nobody's being sneaky with money, correct?
Correct.
I'm just checking. I know that to be true, but to Councilmember Condo's point, we have a resident who comes forward frequently with questions about our process. And I just want to make sure that residents aren't misunderstanding, that this is a standard practice, we do this. I recommend approval as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open. I will close that vote and CB 2028 on second reading passes unanimously.
Resolutions, the first one, CR 46. Will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution approving addendum number one to the professional services agreement between the City of North Glenn and Edge Contracting Incorporated for the Webster Lake Flume Project.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
I'd like to welcome Director of Public Work Sarah Borgers to provide a summary of this item. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So this is a small addendum to a contract. We had a contractor come in and do some work on the Webster Lake Flume. All of Flume is, is a structure to let water off of the canal and into Webster Lake. When we got into that process, we found some concrete that was failing. So we're going to have to do some extra work to get that up to snuff and didn't have quite enough contingency to make it all happen. So we're asking for an addendum number one of $7,950 with Edge to, to cover all of the work that needed to happen there.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote and CR 46 passes unanimously.
CR 47, will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution approving a cooperative agreement between the City of North Glenn, Adams 12 Five-Star Schools and Front Range Community College regarding the city's participation in the pathways in technology early college high school program.
Move for approval?
Seconded.
All right, our Director of Economic Development Allison Moding is here to introduce this item. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Tonight, we're here to ask for your consideration on an agreement to partner with Adams 12 Five-Star Schools and Front Range Community College as part of their PTEC program. PTEC is a program that dates back to 2015. We are, North Glenn High School is one of 22 schools statewide that has this particular program that really works to connect students to high-tech jobs of the future. And we have an opportunity to, to be part of that. Last year, we were asked by North Glenn High School to consider becoming an industry partner. And so we reviewed the program. We talked internally with staff about how we might be able to support them as they're, again, preparing students for the future. And so we are here with an agreement tonight. The great thing about this, it helps, does, is consistent with strategic plan item 2.9, which we called out in our strategic plan that we would like to partner more with Future Forward and Adams 12 to help prepare students. And we know that we have lots of opportunities and many city departments that still involve that technology piece. So tonight, it's my, my pleasure to introduce Todd Korn. Todd is the Program Coordinator at North Glenn High School through their STEM program. And he's going to share a little bit more about the program and how it works. And then I'll be back to make our recommendations. So Todd?
Welcome. Thank you for your patience, sticking it out.
Hello, Councilman. This is, this is awesome. Can I take a selfie? Because like, I don't know if I'll ever get to talk again.
You totally should.
So like, I think I got some of you in. So either way, this is awesome. I did prepare some slides that I was shared. Perfect. Thank you so much. But first, you know, this PTEC partnership is quite amazing. I'll give a little history behind it as it comes up on the screen here in a second. A year ago around this time, we were looking for a new partner. Our partner was Lumen Technologies and they had left and told us they were no longer going to be our partner. So it was my job then. And before we get to that part, I want to thank my principal, Sherry Blunt. She's retiring this in here soon, but she gave me the freedom to just, you know, to work and, and to go and do all these things. And so I truly appreciate that, Sherry. So thank you. But so at that time, we had to find a new partner. So I did my work and I did a lot of thinking about this. And we found two industry partners. And I'll talk about those in a little while. But then we thought, okay, the City of North Glenn would probably be the next logical step because industry partners can come and go, like we've seen. In fact, we had our industry partner change their name three times in the time that we had him as our partner. So I thought, okay, the City of North Glenn's not going to go anywhere and North Glenn High School's not going to go anywhere. So this is like perfect, you know, harmony. But anyway, so PTEC is an innovative partnership between a high school, you know, a community college and then industry employers, which that'd be the City of North Glenn. So our mission is to empower students of unrepresented populations and to get them, you know, first-generation collegegoers, English language learners, females in STEM careers, to get them involved in, in some higher education, get them some certifications, get them a degree, and then also get them connected to these high-tech paying jobs, right? And so that's kind of the, the purpose behind this. And you'll see that's what we've built at North Glenn High School and through our population and through their students, that we really have these things that PTEC is looking for. So these are our students. These students are from tons of different backgrounds. They've done a ton of things. There you see in the middle there Delaney holding her, you know, diploma. She was one of our very first graduates, finishing this in 2021. So she did this in five years. You know, and you see other students, like, if you look down here in the bottom right and you see the gentleman looking at the computer screen. His name is Brandon. He's done, he's going to graduate this spring. And he, he's a musician. So he's all about music, but he's used this to, to fuel his, his, his education. But kids do all kinds of things in this pathway. But the really great part is they do get some amazing parts and it costs you literally nothing. Literally. But PTEC is a unique way for schools to partner with higher education than partner with industries, right? There's some information you can read on the left there, but I'm going to tell you more about our partners on the right. So our two industry partners we have now, first one would be Cable Labs. They are a nonprofit telecommunications industry expert, really, that helps every telecommunications business in the world. When we went to visit their site, they had 14 different internet providers from around the world who were working with their staff to make sure that their internet routers and modems were going to work with the existing network. They are coming to our school, you know, on a monthly basis. They were in, in our school in, in January, teaching our students how to actually make, coax cables for their house, but even ethernet cables. Our kids were able to test those. I had four students come back the next day and were like, hey, I need a 10-foot cord. I was like, okay, have at it. And they made their own, right? They wanted to play Xbox a little faster than over the wifi. Totally get it. So Cable Labs has some interesting things that I've, as I keep learning more about them. And they really have some ways to partner with us and they're looking to get more involved with our, our work in our school all the time. The next company we partnered with was Solid Power. Solid Power is just up north in Thornton. They have two locations, one in Louisville and one in Thornton. They essentially build solid-state lithium batteries, right? It's a relatively, rather new innovation. They received a $50 million grant from the federal government to work exclusively with our PTEC students, Front Range Community College and, and them. So they're looking to build internships based on the work that we're doing. The students wouldn't necessarily be working with the batteries, but rather on the IT side of things, maybe in the business side of things as well. Okay, so both partners have spent time and considerable amount of time in our school, working with our students. Here this, in the spring and June, our students are going to go to those different places and visit them and learn more about what this industry does and then even job shadow people and see things like what they can do in those industries. But that's where you can also add on as well. Here's some of the numbers of our current students. So we have 108 current students. 70% are first generation of college. Their parents didn't go to college, right? Filling out an application for a college is relatively, is really new for them. Okay, 38% are female. In our freshman class this year, we're actually 50% female. It's a new thing. It's amazing. It was the coolest thing to recruit and get those kids to be involved in it. There's 86, 86% are unrepresented populations in STEM careers. And we also have, you know, 39% of our culturally, racially diverse students as well, okay? Here's our graduates. Our graduates, we have 47 current graduates. We're going to add, go over 50 this next couple of weeks. In fact, I think two weeks, rather. 83% of those, first generation of college, 32% female, right? These are big numbers that we're looking at that are, that are making a significant difference. Now, the next numbers I'm going to show you are really ones that I think are amazing is because we have saved families over $2 million in tuition. The tuition is paid for by the state of Colorado, right? Front Range doesn't pay a thing for it. Neither does Cable Labs or Solid Power or U. It's paid for by the state of Colorado because this was signed into law in 2015 by Governor Hickenlooper. Each student receives over $12,000 as a scholarship as they begin the program. They take about 75% of their classes at North Glenn High School. Then they have one to two years to complete their pathway. I talked about Brandon a little bit ago. Brandon's had a lot of life happen the last couple of years. So he went into that sixth year and we still helped him with his school. We paid for his books, his fees, tuition. We even gave Brandon a laptop when he was a freshman. The classes, we've done a lot of work in this, this part of this. You can have this document as well, but you can access this to where you can look at every class they take from Front Range. You can access the syllabus and you can look at also ways for you to partner with those classes. There might be a class that your IT department, it's like, we would love to work with this group because they're working on this project at this time. And that's exactly why we built this whole, this little platform here. At Cable Labs, they have what they call SMEs, Subject Matter Experts. And they often talk about, how can we get those kids into your programming class? They say, well, here's the, the syllabus for this class. And they look at where they can get those kids in and where they can fit in with the real world, what's happening in industry, what's going on in the real world, not just a textbook. Now can we get that connected to your students? PTEC is a great way for us to, to mentor kids, to build our own, to grow our own from within here in the City of North Glenn. There's apprenticeships and internships. The very first internship is, is happening this spring through Adams 12 of IT. We have three internships available. That's going to be paid for by the school district that these college students are going to be able to have and work at. So this is a big, big step for us. In the coming years, Cable Labs and Solid Power will also have internships available. And then hopefully this soon, the City of North Glenn will as well, okay? They're going to come visit the City of North Glenn. They're going to job shadow with people. When we go visit the city, or the Front Range Community College, we actually have a little bit of service learning for the students. The last couple of years, we've had students had to take a tower, desktop computer, and go to a classroom and swap out that tower and then make sure it worked for the next person that comes into the room. Last year, we were taking out hard drives out of laptops. But they're actually getting real skills. They're seeing real things, not just somebody talking about what they could do. Now, the biggest thing that North, City of North Glenn will provide is, there's no guarantees to this. You're not guarantee, guaranteeing a kid a job. You're only guaranteeing them that they could be first in line for an interview and opportunity. That's the biggest thing that we ask for this. And that's what other companies are doing as well. If the kid is qualified for the position, right? It's just give them that opportunity, give them a chance. And that's what we're working towards. The last part here is, there's a ton of different departments that, that, you know, Heather and Allison and I, when we've talked, is ways to partner with this. And I truly appreciate their time because we've spent a, a year on this. It's been awesome. It's cool to see it come, come to fruition here. But tons of different ways to get kids involved. I have kids that want to be in IT. I have kids that want to be in graphic design. I have kids that want to be in all kinds of different departments, legal even. And this is a way to get them, yes, even legal, they want to do that. Myself, I went to law school for a year and I didn't want to do it. I got out quick. But that being said, they have different interests. Yes, the pathway is in computer information systems, but that's just the jumping off point, right? That's just the, the on-ramp on the interstate. Many of our kids will go on to get a bachelor's degree and go on to different things. But this is a collaborative process with everybody involved. And that's the other beauty of it. We meet monthly and we collaborate together. We look at ways we can bring industry trends into the classroom and work together. But this does create that talent pipeline, or pipeline, that I think we all look for with education in the industry. That is my last slide.
Wonderful closing. Wonderful closer.
Any questions that I can answer?
Councilmember Condo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to know, is, are trades considered part of the, in scope of all of this?
So this, the PTEC pathway is particularly just for North Glen High School, and that is just for computer information systems. It is a career technical education pathway, but if you're looking at something like welding and electricians and all of that, I would love for us in Adams Twelve to build more PTEC schools like that, but we have not done that.
Understand. The, the reason why I ask, and I don't want to waste time, but Dr. Cog has this $200 million EPA grant over the next five years, and so there's a workforce development component to it. Unfortunately, it's more of developing people that can do electrical, HVAC, mechanical, and all this other stuff. So I wanted to, that was my brainstorm, was to see if you could tap into that, but it sounds like probably not.
Yeah.
Councilmember Roper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for being here. Thank you for this amazing presentation on what you guys are doing. What an innovative way to support our college and career-ready young people. Thank you for that. I love the gains as far as female students and our multilingual learners. That's very impressive and important. And as we just learned tonight, a third of our public servants are going to be retiring soon. So what a great way for us to grow our own young people and get them involved in the work of being a public servant, servant, and learning the work of the city. So thank you.
This is super exciting. I love it so much. Mayor Protem. Your hand was in the yellow again, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for being here. I mean, I just have to say, I love everything that the STEM program at North Glen High School does. I mean, all the innovation, just the support for the kids there has always impressed me. If we want to see that change in the future, you know, we have to start with the kids. Five, 10 years from now, that's where we'll see that reduction, right, in homelessness and, you know, drug abuse and all the things. So this is a way, this is such a great way for these kids to have that opportunity. So thank you for that innovative thinking. I'm pretty excited for, you know, for the kids to be able to have North Glen as kind of, you know, a place for them to learn. And I guess I have one small question. You might not know the answer, but there's 108 students now, or previously. Do we know about how many we're anticipating maybe sending to North Glen, or having them participate with North Glen? Is it all, is it whoever wants to?
Great question. So there are currently 108 students in the pathway. That's from ninth grade to 12th grade, and also the fifth and sixth year. So it's because they're at Front Range Community College. It's an interesting thing. I ask a 14-year-old to make a career choice, and then a choice for the next five years when they're 14. Usually, I'll, even 13. And I'm like, okay, here we go. You're going to be this, this thing for the next five years. I've got 16 seniors. Out of those 16 seniors right now, six of those already decided to go on to other opportunities. The, the amazing part is, is they're going to have access to look at all these different things, right? I think each cohort is kind of different. It depends on, on what they're, what they're interested in, what they, they, they see as, as the next step for them. But legitimately, I have 10 seniors or even another 12 kids that are at Front Range that you could look at getting an internship for. I have a student who has graduated from PTEC, graduated from Front Range. They're going to Western Colorado University right now. They have contacted me, because they're coming back this summer. They were looking for an internship, and I hopefully set them up with one with Adams Twelve. But those are those kind of connections that we've built through time, through this, this pathway, and that, you know, that's my hope to be, bring more of those. So I hope that we can get as many as we can. That'd be my hope. You know, in our experience, in our work that Sherry and I have done, is that we've noticed that kids won't take an internship unless it's paid, right? If I can make more money working at Olive Garden than taking this internship, then I'm probably going to do that if I'm a 17-year-old. But I think we can, we can find ways to make sure that they're going to be competitive, and they want to have these internships. And I think that's where we get the kids that go, okay, I'm going to go work for the City of North Glen because of this. Adams Twelve, the internships we set up with them were only six weeks long. But Adams Twelve asked, can we make, have them work longer? I said, absolutely. The 16, the six weeks is just for our programming, to check with them, see how things are going, but then after that, they're all yours. I have a student, Tyler Drake is his name. He went through PTEC, graduated. He's been working for Adams Twelve since he was a junior in high school. He was our student tech aide, but then he worked for them, worked over the summer, and now he's working as an audiologist for the, the school district while he's working on his bachelor's degree.
That is great. Thank you so much. I mean, super excited about this opportunity for these kids. So really appreciate all the work that's going into it. And I love that there's business classes too, just as a business owner.
Yeah.
That's such a great skill to have, you know, to have that choice, and the leadership is important. So, thank you.
Yeah, they actually earned two certificates while they do this, two industry-recognized. They'll earn their application specialist. So I have juniors this year who are going to participate in their first graduation ceremony. I'll go back to pictures, just like these here. Many of these kids in the bottom there were juniors in high school, and they were participating in the college graduation ceremony. If you're a North Glen High School kid, you wouldn't want to wear blue a lot, but that day they did. But then, you know, as seniors then, they get their Foundations of Leadership and Management certificate as well. So we're trying to give these kids two different industry-recognized certificates before they even leave high school.
Incredible. Thank you. Councilmember Condo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Glad we had the conversation about the internships and work following. So is that primarily going to happen over summer break, or does it happen during the academic year? Can you, can you expand upon that a little bit?
Well, the beauty of PTEC is we're very flexible. We want to collaborate. We want to work with our, our industry partner, but also us and the kids. These internships we have set up with Adams Twelve are over the summer. But if we could work out a schedule with a student, if they didn't have, let's say, a lot of extracurricular activities, they might be able to work out where it's like, hey, we have a City of North Glen has an internship, and we want to set one up during the school year. We probably could facilitate that work as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. I think, Allison, did you have any final thoughts? We're going to move to vote.
I think what I would just say is that staff does recommend approval of the resolution, and if there are any questions from staff's perspective, I would be happy to answer those.
We're good.
All right.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CR 47 passes unanimously.
So I have, I have one sort of unconventional request. If Council would join me down front, maybe we can get you a proper photo.
All right, everybody, smile. Go North. All right, one of those should work. Thanks.
I will now recess the regular City Council meeting and call to order a meeting of the Marijuana Licensing Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lukman-Haramasa.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Hadamiyo.
Here.
Councilmember Condo.
Here.
Councilmember Roper.
Here.
Councilmember Goff.
Here.
Councilmember Nowiki.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of January 27, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the motion to approve the January 27 minutes passes unanimously.
So tonight, we're looking at the annual renewal application for Fresh Organic LLC Doing Business As Fresh Cannabis. City Clerk Small will provide a summary of this application.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Staff is bringing forward the annual license renewal application submitted by Fresh Organic LLC Doing Business As Fresh Cannabis, formerly located at 11450 Cherokee Street, units A4 through A7. So this application is not eligible for administrative approval, and that is because the licensee does not have possession of the property. The marijuana code requires a licensee to have possession and to also maintain possession of the premises for which a license is issued. The lease for the premises at 11450 Cherokee Street expired on February 28 of this year. So staff asked the licensee to surrender the license, and they declined. Therefore, the city needs to move forward with processing the renewal application. Before the licensing authority can deny a renewal application, a hearing must be held on that application. So staff is requesting that City Council, acting as the Marijuana Licensing Authority, direct the city attorney to prepare a notice of hearing and order to show cause that can be issued to the licensee. Staff recommends setting the hearing for June 9, 2025, and that notice would come back to City Council on May 12 for approval. So sample motion language is included in the staff summary that is in your packet, and staff and the city attorney are happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Feels pretty straightforward. Do I have a motion?
I move to direct City Attorney Hoffman to draft a notice of hearing and order to show cause regarding the application for renewal submitted by Fresh Organic LLC Doing Business As Fresh Cannabis.
Second. Is that an official vote?
That's an official motion. So if there's discussion, if not, I will open the vote for City Council.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I will now adjourn the meeting of the Marijuana Licensing Authority and reconvene the regular City Council meeting. Moving into public invited to be heard, this is an opportunity for public comment. Statements are limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments must be related to an item previously addressed by Council during the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to Council at this time? Okay. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion that the City Council hold an executive session pursuant to Section 4.5D of the City of North Glen Home Rule Charter for legal consultation and advice regarding application of the city's sign code and managing public spaces, and pursuant to Section 4.5A of the City of North Glen Home Rule Charter for personnel matters regarding the 2025 city manager review process.
Motion as shown stated.
I'll second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the motion to meet in executive session passes unanimously.
We will adjourn to the executive session.